This is the City of Opaaca, first Tuesday of the month, City Council meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome. We're going to start tonight out with a public hearing. And Daniel will take the role.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Perczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin. Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ninth present, we have a quorum.
Okay. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is... Jared, would you like to state the purpose of the hearing?
I would love to. So, the purpose of this public hearing is for ordinance number 2122. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 of the City of Opaaca zoning code, zoning ordinance. This one is specifically relating to the changing of lot standards in a couple of our zoning districts, specifically R1, single-family; R2, two-family; R3, multi-family; B1, neighborhood business district; I1, light industrial; and I2, heavy industrial. Within the council packet on page 95, there's actually a red line that staff created to make it easier. And for anyone else that would like to pull up the packet, those again on page 95. Specifically, things that were changing, reducing minimum areas, reducing minimum widths, reducing or simplifying minimum open space requirements. And then also just trying to standardize a couple of the other requirements such as minimum floor area, heights of accessory dwelling units, and then just accommodating the setbacks to better match the reduced minimum areas. So, there's a little bit of new, a little bit of cleanup, and then trying to make the overall lot standards more consistent throughout all districts.
Okay, thanks, Jared. At this time, I'll take testimony in favor of the subject. Is there any testimony in favor of the subject? If so, please state your name and address for the record and limit your testimony to three minutes or less. Okay, hearing none. Is there any testimony in opposition of the subject? Any testimony in opposition? Okay, there's none, so I will declare that this public hearing meeting closed at 6:03. And we'll jump right into the City Council meeting. The mayor is attending remotely, but he felt it's appropriate to have the meeting chaired by somebody in person. And that person is me, I'm Paul Mayo, City Council President. I should state that I will be voting on all agenda items. Just so we note that. We'll start out tonight with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, would you read the open meeting statement, please?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you. Would you please take the role, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Present.
Scott Perczatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin. Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ninth present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. And as we do in every council meeting, have the city staff introduce themselves, and we'll start with Sandy.
I'm Sandy Stibbs, the city clerk.
Erin Jensen, City Administrator.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Jared Requieu, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Raif, Assistant Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hosele, Chief of Police.
Okay, we have Josh, our IT Director, behind the scenes, no doubt.
He is actually not here today. I should've told you that before.
Okay, he's not here.
Usually, it's hard to tell.
Okay. All right. Item five is a consent agenda. If there's anything staff or council would like to remove from the consent agenda onto their regular agenda, now is the time to make that request. If not, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut and second by Peterson to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we move on to the regular agenda. Do we have any additions, Sandy, at all?
We do. Under number nine, New Business Letter J, additional information was uploaded to the city website for the proposed Lakeman Field Master Plan effort. And that's all.
All right. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda if the addition of Sandy just mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Fair, second by Chestnut to approve tonight's agenda with the additional item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. We have no announcements or correspondence, and we'll move directly to public input. If there's anything anybody has to say about a non-agenda item, anybody in the audience, staff, council, please state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less on non-agenda items. Lori.
I just want to thank everybody, the people of Opaaca, the staff of the city, Parks and Rec, everybody who put on a fantastic Friday night. So much fun. Everybody, that's all I heard is how much fun it was. And we're going to keep doing it, we're going to keep doing it right. So, I got to enter, I don't know, just talk with a lot of people, which we're really happy to see what's happening with the City of Opaaca. So, thank you to everybody.
Thanks, Lori. Anybody else? All right. We'll move on to unfinished business. First up is ordinance number 19, that's 2022, and ordinance amending Opaac Municipal Code, Section 9.02, Use and Possession of Firearms, Bowls and Crossbows. To amend 9.02, parent two, use of firearms, bows and crossbows, amending Section 9.03, parent two, permit for use in possessions of firearms, bows and crossbows, and amending Section 9.04, throwing or shooting arrows, stones, or other missiles prohibited. This is, this is second reading. I think this is Chief Hosele that's going to talk about this. Can you just remind us what we're doing here?
Yeah. So, it was brought forward to the, to the city about possibly using firearms on parcels in the City of Opaaca to deer hunt or any other hunting, bird hunting, whatever it may be. So, I had met with Erin and the mayor, and we kind of developed a plan. And myself and Sandy and a few others worked on an ordinance as to updating as to how we could possibly bring this forward to council to, to look for approval for it. So, basically, what it would allow would be any persons hunting with a firearm in a privately owned parcel, 20 acres or greater within the city limits, would have to fill out an application, would have to meet with the Chief of Police, and they would have to pay a $10 fee that would be valid from the, from two years of the date of that would be issued. One of the things that would happen during that is whoever the person is that gets that permit would have to meet with myself, and we would talk about hunting and safety guidelines that would be happening on the property, possible guns that they would be using on the property, and the safety. And they would have to always follow all DNR rules. The property owners should be responsible for notifying the adjacent property owners that they've been authorized to hunt with the firearm on the approved property during established Wisconsin DNR hunting seasons. And then on Section 7 here, it's any person hunting with bows, crossbows, and privately owned or city-owned parcels during the year, citywide deer hunt with a special license as issued and managed by city personnel. Reasonable restrictions may be prescribed by the responsible city personnel, and all DNR rules shall be followed. And we had to also make some changes in the ordinance because you are not allowed to discharge a firearm in the city. So, under Section 3 of the Municipal Code, 9.03 Sub 2, is amended as follows. A permit for the use of firearms, bows, or crossbows on private property may be issued by the police department for that fee. And then under Section 4 of 9.04, of the throwing or shooting of stones, arrows, or missiles prohibited, it would say that no person shall throw or shoot any objects, arrows, stones, snowballs, or other missiles, or projectiles by hand, other than the means, and then including discharge of firearm at any person at or in any building, city street, sidewalk, alleyway, highway, park, playground in the city. And this is what we had brought forward to the council.
Thanks, Chief. Have we received any feedback from the public on this at all? Okay.
Not from the public, just from the discussion that happened on the council floor two weeks ago. Did you mention?
No, I was just going to mention that. I did get ahold of Warden John Kaiser. He is our warden in this area. We've had conversations in regards to the deer hunt with firearms in the City of Opaaca, and I thought it would be appropriate for John to attend the meeting tonight in case anybody in council had any questions in regards to DNR laws or what they can do to help us, or not, you know, if that's something that we have to deal with.
Henry.
How does staff feel that this is different than the managed deer hunt? Is it a, is it a nuance? Is it basically the same thing? How do you perceive it? Bigger, different?
I'll take a shot at that, Brian, and you can chime in. I think it's, so the managed deer hunt is from a specific date, typically in January to end of March. It's managed by Roger Hanson, one of our staff members. And there's specific, well, and it's actually bow. It is not firearm. This, and I think this is an important thing that, to remember, this is, everyone thinks gun deer season, right? But really, this is an ordinance that would allow for any DNR-recognized season. So, ducks, deer, whatever it may be. And I'm certainly not an expert on all of those seasons and those regulations, but that's why we have Mr. Kaiser here. So, it would basically be DNR hunting, just like you could in any other area. Yep.
Paul.
What if a person, a concealed carry person, was defending their life in this, in one of those areas, a city park, say, or sidewalk, and they would be against this ordinance? I mean, that's a valid question to ask.
Well, you have a right to carry, it's, that's a concealed weapon, that's a state law. This is an ordinance that would trump that? The state law would?
So, but it's saying that the person can't discharge a firearm or any other weapon to defend themselves?
It doesn't say to defend themselves in here.
Okay, so, just says that they can't do it?
Correct. But that would be something that would go to the district attorney's office. If there was a criminal complaint that was involved, we wouldn't be issuing ordinance violation for somebody that had a concealed carry, because that's legal in the State of Wisconsin to do, as long as they have a license. That, we wouldn't be writing somebody a ticket for a municipal violation for that. This, this ordinance was created before the concealed carry was created. So, that would be something that we would just not enforce if it was a legal justification.
So, they, a person with concealed carry could, could carry in the park as long as they, as long as they're not, no one sees it, basically? Is that what you're saying?
No.
Does this have any, any relevance to that?
The ordinance doesn't have any relevance to concealed carry.
Okay.
Anybody else? Dave.
My concern, I can't get over it all the way, is using rifles with the long-range possibilities they have. I remember back in the day when I first hunted with, Opaac was a shotgun thing, and I was shotgun only because I didn't have the carry that a rifle does. Now, I understand it's open. I also didn't understand that this was open for birds. So, I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with birdshot. I still think I might have a problem with full-loaded firearm as such, unless somebody can talk me out of that or defend it better.
This, this might be a good time for Jonathan to come up and just give your two cents on the difference between shotgun and rifle for those, for everyone.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate you all having me tonight. You know, similar to when we had the discussions about setting up the special deer hunt, you know, my, my goal is to be hopefully, again, a resource and not as much offer, perhaps, an opinion to work through, you know, as far as serving the city and, and offering kind of that professional, if you will, outlook, and then, of course, advise on our laws. So, I guess it goes without saying, and I think I can speak for the, the police department as well. Obviously, our top priority, regardless of what we enforce, is public safety, right? That being said, you know, from a firearms perspective, you know, as someone who utilizes, is trained in firearms, as well as teaches hunter safety, you know, of course, like you mentioned, Mr. Peterson, there are definitely notable differences between certain different types of firearms, that being shotguns, rifles, you name it. Typically, for those who may not know, a rifle is going to have a longer range overall than a shotgun, be it shot that you would typically use for birds in most cases, or even a shotgun slug. That being said, and Chief Hosele and I had talked about this, while this is not necessarily pushing for rifle use, just more or less something we discussed, that with this ordinance limiting that hunting activity to 20 acres or greater, I think that's certainly an important fact to keep in mind, simply due to the fact that if you look out, you know, throughout the state, as well as throughout our county here, there are many folks who hunt on basically as much as one-plus acre. Whether or not that's safe, at this point, you know, it seems like with how much we love deer in this county, if someone's got five or more acres somewhere out in the country, a lot of times, they are hunting from it, and a lot of times, they are already firearm hunting from it. So, I guess I offer that perspective simply because even more than the capabilities of a firearm, obviously, the user is the, the individual who's most responsible for the consequences, if you will, of pulling, pulling the trigger. As well as, I had heard that as part of this program, safety will be discussed, as well as discussing that specific property. And while, of course, that can't rule out any, you know, any and all unsafe discharge of a firearm, I guess that's something to keep in mind. But to, to answer your question, you know, I guess it's fair to say that rifles typically do have a, a longer range overall. That's also assuming that, you know, once that, that round is fired, it doesn't strike anything else, because, you know, on the same note, shotguns can travel quite a ways, and it's hard to predict what may or may not happen. So, hopefully, that kind of touches on that.
Mr. Jonathan? Dave? Any other comments or questions? Oh, Colin.
Yeah, I think I would tend to agree with the points that Alderman Peterson made in discussing this with a couple of hunters in the area. There's a lot of concern that I have in relation to rifles. But as you said, you know, many people do hunt on small lands. But then again, I think requirements within the city that would limit a bullet from a rifle traveling outside of the area of the acreage we're talking about, for instance, requiring anyone using a rifle to be above the ground, shooting downward. I think that'd be also shooting, requiring any, any discharge of the firearm to be aimed toward the middle of the property, as opposed to the edges. Anybody on the outside edge could, you know, miss and, and enter into a neighboring property. And so, those were the kind of two big concerns. I would certainly support shotguns within these, these limits. But I would limit, I don't think I could support rifles unless you included such requirements that would keep the neighboring properties. And, you know, we're going to notify neighbors, but sometimes I think these rifle projectiles could go to the neighbor's neighbor or beyond. And so, I think it'd be prudent to, to find some regulation that we can publicly share with our constituents that says, this is how it's going to be safe. I agree, there's ways it could be safe, but I'd like to see it written for the, for the community.
Okay. Thanks, Colin. All right. Paul.
In regards to Section 4, is, is this really necessary? Because all of these activities would already appear to be illegal anyways, to throw stones or crossbows or discharging a firearm at a person in the city. I mean, isn't it already illegal to do that by, wouldn't that be called assault? So, why are we codifying something that's already appears to be illegal?
That's probably a fair question. I think that was not, because this has been in existence for so long, Paul, I think we were focusing on the parts that we were changing, and I don't think we had a ton of discussion over that. Fair question. I'm not sure I have an answer for it, a good answer for it right now. Chief?
I don't have a good answer either. It's just going through the old ordinance and trying to catch where different things have changed to include that.
Does including this in this ordinance do any harm? I don't think it does.
I don't think it does. I guess that would be an attorney question.
I was not able to hear what you said.
I just asked if including this in the ordinance, does it do any harm?
Right.
Yeah.
I should note, too, that an attorney has, Attorney Sorensen has looked at this. I don't know if we mentioned that last week, but it has been reviewed by an attorney.
Mary.
I think the, yes, I agree. I think the, the issue under number four is just repeating a, or emphasizing the safety, that people can't do those things, so it does no harm, excuse me, at all. I, though, am not in favor of having hunting on city property with any kind of weapon. So, other than our, our controlled hunt that we have, because those are very few people, and I think that's well-controlled. But I am, I'm having trouble with this. I think the safety of, you know, one person getting harmed within the city is more than, I don't want to take that risk, so I will vote no for this.
I do want to point out, and so everybody has a clear understanding, none of these hunts are taking place on city property. It is only privately owned property, not by the city, by individuals that own property in the City of Opaac. So...
All right. I misspoke. I understand that.
All right.
But, okay.
So, I just wanted you to know.
Within the city limits, though.
Correct.
Right.
Dave.
Speaking of the privately owned, I did talk to one person about this, and he didn't seem to have any trouble with it if it was only the owners of the land that could hunt, not opening up to nephews and nieces and friends and everything else. How you control that, I don't know. But that would be a concern. Private person probably has a right to use their land within reason, but...
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. And the only way that that could be enforced is if we were to get complaints. We'd do an investigation, and then if there were violations of that, then those people would be fined appropriately. And then whoever's land that would, that would be is, we would just not renew that license. We would take it away from them, just like any other license we were able to do.
Chief, that is a requirement of the ordinance, that you actually have to own the land you're hunting on within the city?
No.
Oh.
Well, you have to have permission from the, from the owner. It says, and that's what it says in there.
Right.
That the property owners are responsible.
All right. All right, thanks. Erin?
There's been a little bit of discussion around shotguns versus rifles today and, and two weeks ago. And I just have a question for Jonathan.
Sure.
Dean, I'm just, obviously, Opaac County, not that many years ago, was only shotgun, and then it got changed from a DNR regulation standpoint to rif, to allow for rifles. Just curious, are there any other places in the state that are shotgun-only areas?
That's a, that's a very good question. And I guess I should also add, too, I definitely understand where your concerns are coming from. And I think taking those additional steps to, again, increase safety are definitely good ones to be taken. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure where exactly those zones would still be. Of course, formerly, you know, even up till a few years ago, there was a number of areas, especially what they called, you know, the more metro areas, such as, like the Hudson or closer to the Twin Cities. I want to say the Green Bay, Sheboygan area, and of course, closer to Milwaukee, Madison. I guess at this point, I can't say that I know specifically where they only allow shotguns. I'd have to research more or less all of the larger cities or cities that allow firearm hunting or firearm deer hunting, so I, I don't know that for sure. If I could add real quick, too, and this may be an obvious point, but again, we, the DNR, definitely want to support whichever direction the city goes. I always like to add that because this is an ordinance, we, the DNR, or generally state officers, do not have jurisdiction to enforce it, meaning the primary enforcers of that ordinance would, of course, be the police department or potentially the sheriff's department. I believe they may have jurisdiction over ordinances. That being said, you know, whether it's ordinances or trespassing, which on face value, we also do not have jurisdiction for, obviously, oftentimes, DNR or state laws interact or co-mingle, if you will, with ordinance violations. So, just as your ordinance is saying, as well as, as Chief Hosele said, if there is an infraction of state law or something that we can assist with, we certainly want to. I just think that sometimes there's an assumption that because it's a law, even though it's an ordinance, that we are able to investigate or, or enforce it, which unfortunately, we're, we're simply not able to do.
I would make a motion to table this until our next regularly scheduled meeting on November 15th for the purposes of further public input and also reexamining Section 4 of this ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I, can I just make a point of order here? Sorry, this is Mayor Smith.
Yes.
This is actually the second reading of this, so... I think what you're asking, Paul, is that you could table the second reading?
That's correct.
Is that what you're trying to do?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Just wanted to make sure.
Moved by Hagan, second by Perczatsky, that we table the second reading of the ordinance to work out the items that Paul mentioned. Go ahead, Paul.
I don't know that there's a great deal of urgency to this, so, in my opinion, it would make sense to at least look at it for a further couple of weeks, just in case there's further public input now that this has been discussed more. And also to address my question about Section 4.
I get it. Okay. Eric, did you have a comment?
I did. I was, I was just wondering if we could be reminded again, how many properties are we talking about that meet the qualifications?
Hmm.
Didn't seem like very many.
Could pull that up again. I don't have a number off the top of my head. We had that map at the last meeting.
Wasn't it over 20?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I'm not even going to venture to guess, but there was, it's not insignificant.
That are privately owned?
Yes.
I just wondered what that was.
Aaron, you did put a map up, I think, last time, and I don't remember, we'd have to go back to the last meeting to see if we could find that map. You had it color-coded, I know.
Correct.
I don't remember the number, though.
Yeah, I don't think I even ever counted the number, to be honest with you. I'd be happy to, if we're table on the second reading, I'd be happy to bring that back and bring, if there's specific questions on that map and the property details, I'd be happy to have those prepared for them as well.
Okay, Colin. Well, we have Mr. Warden Kaiser here. I was going to inquire, if I could, are there any other municipalities, cities, villages, et cetera, in the area or in the state that have a similar ordinance to this one that you know of?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question. I guess, again, to be honest with you, I'm not entirely sure how many there are. I would venture a guess that there are some out there that do. As far as the 20-acre or greater limit, again, I'm not entirely sure. I could look into it further, reach out to our folks.
Colin, I do know the city of New London does have this.
Okay, thank you. All right, any more discussion on, Henry?
I'm probably not going to vote to table for it. I think we should just vote on it, up or down. It's a very simple question. The staff's researched it, and let's just vote our conscience on it.
Eric?
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with Henry, because it seems like most people are in favor of it, except for the rifle end of it, and we could get that ball rolling if we vote on it. And if it gets voted down and we ask for amendment to it, to take rifles out of it, I don't know. I guess we have to vote, but we'll see.
Okay, we're just voting on tabling the ordinance now. Understood.
You gotta vote on the tabling now, don't you?
Right, that's what we're doing. Okay, we can just do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pause, no?
No.
Motion doesn't pass. So now we're voting on the ordinance itself.
I make a motion that we do not approve the ordinance, second reading.
Second.
And let me explain my rationale. Somebody on the council in the last meeting said we have a lot of hunting land around our city, and while I appreciate the staff and the mayor's willingness to work with the request, because you had a citizen come to you, and you're trying to work with them, and that's what city government does, I think that's commendable, but I just, I don't see, it just seems incongruent to me that we're going to allow hunting in a city. So I make a mo, that's my motion, to not approve the ordinance.
I seconded, but I don't want to, I just want to take rifles out of it, so I guess I'll have to take my second back on that.
Okay, all right.
I'll second that.
Okay. Move by Velicker, second by Fair, that we not approve ordinance number 19-2022. Okay.
Yeah, that's understood, no carve-outs, Eric, right?
Scott?
I'm not an expert on parliamentary procedure here, but isn't that the same thing as we'd be doing to vote the second reading, yes or no?
Point of order.
Point of order, yeah.
Well, Paul's motion is to table it. Henry's motion is to defeat it.
You, I would think it would be better to make, to have a motion to approve and then to then it fail, rather than to move to deny.
Okay.
I retract my motion. Fair enough, Paul. That's a fair point. I'm okay with that. I just want to vote on it. I don't think we need to delay it. Let's just vote on it.
You could move to permanently table it, that would be more appropriate, if you wish to do that.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't defeat it. It can always come back with...
Permanently limbo, right?
Are you rescinding your motion? Or are you keeping it?
Yeah, I just think we should call a vote up or down, and then if it passes, then the prevailing council members can bring a vote in to carve out the rifles if they want, or make the motion to carve out the rifles. So I would, I would, I'm okay with pulling my motion and just having a vote. That was my point in making this motion, was let's just vote on it.
Okay, so my understanding there would be, we need a motion on this very ordinance, and then we vote yes if we're for it, as it's written. We vote no if there's anything about it we would want changed. So if we want to take rifle, if we don't like it at all, we vote no. If we want rifles taken out, we vote no. Okay.
So somebody had to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
We still have to, are you going to rescind your second? I will rescind my second, too. Okay.
Sorry, Paul. Getting a workout today.
Yeah, no lie.
Okay, okay.
Okay, somebody, somebody like to make a motion to approve the ordinance? What happens?
Correct.
Nobody's making a motion, so the ordinance dies. All right.
Well...
Yes, Mayor.
I, it does die, but it does have the opportunity to come back again then.
Sure.
It can be resurrected.
Yeah.
Sure.
The Lazarus Ordinance.
If someone were to want the ordinance minus the rifle, they could make a motion at this time to approve it.
Jermaine.
Minus the rifle provision, or plus the rifle provision.
Well, would it have to go through a first reading again then, if you revised it?
So, we had that discussion, actually, and if there is a change to the ordinance, the question would be whether you need to have, this would be the first reading again, or would this, you know, come back for a first reading and a second reading? I would say, since there is no urgency to this, that if you do make any changes to that, that you probably should come back for a second reading at a later meeting.
Okay. All right. Was that a motion, Paul?
No, I can't really make a motion, because it has, that has not, it was not brought up. So to make a motion to table it to our next meeting would really not be proper.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve this minus the rifle stipulation?
Yes, I would make that motion.
So when you say, just for clarification, Eric, is that shotguns in place, so shotgun-only provision within the ordinance?
Yeah, the only thing I want to see removed is rifles.
Chief?
I do have a question, because we're talking about hunting in the city. They also have muzzleloaders. I don't know if that's considered a shotgun, or is that considered something different? Which muzzleloaders do not follow or travel as far as a rifle, I do know that.
I have a friend who has a muzzleloader. Daniel Boone guns.
Jonathan, do you know the answer to that? When it was shotgun-only in Opaac County, was muzzleloaders included in that? I'm sorry for putting you on the spot. We could look this up as well.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to help. So I believe there was, and I would have to look back, I believe there was still a muzzleloader season at the time. I could do a little digging to verify that for sure. A muzzleloader is not generally counted in the firearm world as a shotgun specifically, although a muzzleloader could function as a shotgun per se. You could fire a shot out of it theoretically. And there's a whole wild realm of muzzleloaders, not to get into too great of detail. They've come a long ways in the past couple decades. So they are, in a sense, probably more so similar to a rifle, but limited to a single shot generally, as well as kind of a middle-ground firearm, I suppose, depending on how you load them and all the variations of them, but they are not technically counted generally as a shotgun.
So, if you don't mind, Paul...
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
It seems to me like you could take a consensus at this time of, of whether, so people would like to see this come back with a change where it says shotgun-only versus any, versus a rifle, and if that's the case, then we could bring this ordinance back at the next meeting with those changes. I'm just throwing it out, that's all I'm saying here. It seems like you're, you're at a, you're at a stalemate where you either have to decide that you don't want hunting in the, in the, in the city of Opaac, or you are okay with hunting in the city of Opaac, but you want it to only be shotgun. And so, you know, I'm just trying to help get you to that point.
All right, thanks, Mayor. I think that was Eric's motion, right? Okay. Are you seconding, Dave?
No, I've not heard a second to his motion. Last I knew, an item died, for lack of a motion. I think we just leave it there. If somebody wants to make a new mo, do it again, whenever they come back with something, just let it go. Don't put any, two weeks from now or something. Somebody's going to come up and say, rewrite this, so we can look at it again.
Well, and also...
Just let it go, we're done.
And also, we've now brought up another question about muzzleloaders, and so there's a lot of things that people are still going to need to do some research on to bring us a clean ordinance.
I think Eric's motion is just shotgun and nothing else. Correct.
But there hasn't been a second yet.
There was a second, I'm sorry. There was not a second to it, I don't think. We're done.
Henry?
Can I just make one last comment to my fellow board members? You're carving out, if we do this in the future, and it's not to say that it will, but if you carve out rifles, and we're saying that we have to follow the DNR rules for hunting, which would allow rifles, this is sort of like near beer. You know, we're trying to do something that just seems, just, it just, it just seems like we're just really working around to try to make something happen, and there's just lots of hunting land around the city.
Okay.
That's my final point.
We don't.
No second.
Laurie?
I have one more question. When you're looking at, this is going to be 20 acres of land. I'm going to talk to the guy from the DNR, okay? So, you know, and you're, you're in the city, and I think everybody thinks, how many people are going to be on that land? How many people are recommended, like, is there a recommendation, a number of people that can be on a land at a time? Or, you know, they go off to all these public grounds, and my goodness, you see them parked from here to whatever, and they're all in the woods. So is there any...
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess the simplest answer is no. Generally, you know, we encourage safety, depending on the land type, the setting, who's hunting there, you know, ability, experience, all those different things, but no, no restrictions or advisements that I know of it. And you're correct, whether it's public land or certain pieces of private, they certainly are able to fit a lot of hunters on some of those properties.
So, if you don't mind, if I can say one other thing, I, again, we had this discussion at the staff level too, and I have to tell you, from a mayor's standpoint, from the mayor's office standpoint, and I, and I think our staff would agree with you, you're not going to hurt anybody's feelings if you don't pass this. We brought this forward because there were residents in our community that were, thought that it was a good idea. If you don't think it's a good idea, or if it's just got, it, it, there's just too many variables to it, we're okay with that. We'll move on. That's fine.
Thanks, Mayor. Eric made a motion to approve this ordinance with the change that only shotguns are allowed and no rifles. I don't think he specifically mentioned muzzleloaders, but I understood it to be only shotguns, which would exclude every other kind of firearm. Do we have a second?
He said no rifles.
He said only shotguns, which would mean no rifles.
He did, and then I asked for clarification.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. All right, if there's no second, the motion dies, and the ordinance dies. So if this is going to come up again, it'll have to be recreated and go through the first reading and second reading again. All right, we'll move on to Item B, an unfinished business, which is ordinance number 20-2022, an ordinance amending 17.102 zoning district map is allowed for under 17.700. This is also the second reading, and Jared?
Thank you very much. So this one starts on page 62 of your packets. I think to best explain this one, if you go to page 64 of your packet, there's actually a snippet of the zoning map. So what this request is, this is a rezone request of a parcel on Fulton Street. This parcel on Fulton Street is quite large, and it is currently dual-zoned. So currently, it has a B4 commercial district, as well as a R1 residential district, all on the same parcel. This is an issue per our zoning code, as our zoning code does not accommodate dual zoning. So this request is being brought forward as a requirement of the city to eliminate dual zoning from this parcel before any other items move forward. So this request is switching the R1 portion of the parcel to B4 to match the remainder of the parcel that is already zoned B4. This specific parcel does contain the old Kmart building, Piggly Wiggly, and the other adjacent stores. Happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Thanks, Jared. Comments, questions for Jared?
Is this rezoning being done to accommodate any future, future business?
It is and it isn't. I mean, either way, if they were to do anything to this parcel, that would be a requirement that they fix that dual zoning. In this specific case, another development and more development interest is being brought forward, so it is being brought forward and kind of catalyzed by that. That is, that is the push.
Okay, anybody else? Somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve this.
Second.
Move by Chestnut, second by Fair, that we approve ordinance number 20-2022. Any further discussion? Daniel, call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Paul Mio.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Nine Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, we move on to new business. First item, license report number 1596, Class B intoxicating liquor license and Class B fermented malt beverage license, having to do with Crystal River Pub and Grill LLC, 1332 Churchill Street, April Fonder Agent. Andy?
April is in the audience. She's not buying the building, only the business, is that correct? And this is just transferring the license.
Okay. It's usually routine.
Very routine.
Any questions, comments, motion?
Move. Second.
Move by Peterson, second by Paul Hagan, to approve license report number 1596. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, no. And carries. Item B is license report number 1598, Arcade Amusement Device License, also having to do with Crystal River Pub and Grill LLC. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions, discussion?
Are there actually going to be gaming machines on premises?
Yes.
All right. Well, I know they have a pool table there, so... Well, I know they have a pool table there, so probably others too, right? Other games besides pool?
Yep, there's, there's pool, and then there'll be five gaming machines.
All right. Motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Oh, go ahead. Second.
Yes.
Mary. Motion by Fair, second by Velker, to approve license report number 1598. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Nay.
Motion carries. I think. License report number 1599 Dance Hall License, Crystal River Pub and Grill LLC.
Move to approve.
Second by Fair.
Second.
Second by Peterson to approve license, license, license report number 1599. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. And next is license report number 1597 Operators License, denial to Cody Nyland. Chief, would you like to explain?
Yes, we have some bartender license approval guidelines that, that are followed every time somebody fills out an application to serve alcohol. And based on the guidelines that were set forth by the city, I would recommend a denial of approval for Mr. Nyland for the bartender's license. I did speak with him before the meeting, went over the guidelines, and I also met with Ms. Fonder outside and shared the guidelines with her, and he understands what our guidelines are. And he left. He did not have any other questions.
Okay. And he doesn't meet the guidelines?
No, he does not.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the chief? I need a motion to deny the operator's license to Cody Nyland.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Peterson, to deny an operator's license to Cody Nyland for the reasons the chief, chief explained. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Item E is a recommendation to end the CDBG-CV program. Aaron.
Thanks, Paul. So on page 79, there's a memo, council members in your packet. Just a little background, this is a grant that was received, CDBGCV. This was a special program, kind of in the height in response to COVID. It was a housing assistance program that helped with grants to people that were negatively impacted by coronavirus, and it helped with utility payments, rent payments, mortgages primarily. And this was a program that was, we, we had to apply as the city of Opaaca, but we would have never received it if it was just the city of Opaaca residents benefiting from it. We were told at that time by the DOA that we had to have a larger regional impact. So we partnered with CAP Services, who was, it benefited in two ways. One, we got that larger regional impact in the five county service area that CAP Services serves, and then also they have experience in administering these programs, which they have done. We are at a point right now where though it has had a, a very positive impact, it's probably safe to say that it hasn't been utilized quite as well as we thought it might be. There are other programs right now that take the place of this type of a program, and Laura from CAP Services, who's with us tonight, can tell us a little bit more detail about that than I can. But the DOA has also asked us to consider returning these funds. To be clear, we haven't received the funds. This is a reimbursement program, so whenever there's a, a payment made, we get reimbursed through it. So it's not like we're giving $700,000 back, we're just saying please reallocate it in the CDBG program. It's also important to note that we have tried to reallocate this for city-specific projects. Other, like, an example of other projects that the CDBG program said that they would consider was safe outdoor recreation that's accessible for all. You know, our splash pad project was one that we, Greg sent a letter of consideration to amend our grant award to allow for that as an expense, as well as a pedestrian footbridge and a connection to the downtown and a park to a neighborhood and residence. It was pretty emphatically denied by the DOA, largely because it didn't have the regional impact that this did. And we very quickly realized that we weren't going to be able to have a qualifying expense that did. So it is our recommendation to follow the DOA's suggestion and reallocate the dollars, basically ending the program December 31st, 2022, reallocating the unused dollars to the CDBG program. And Laura is here, if you have any questions on details, I think I did provide some details and some of Laura's information in the memo as well.
Why wouldn't they just want to continue with the program? I mean, maybe they're thinking it's underutilized, but why not just continue it and maybe, you know, get some more traction?
The CDBGCV funds are designed to end at the end of this year. It was a very limited term, and so the, the state put that as the deadline.
Another reason would be, it, it's a CDBG program, it's a lot of administrative work for staff, and when you look at what the city's staff is doing and how many city residents are getting it, it's, can be classified as a little bit of an administrative burden.
If that money is reallocated, does that mean Opaaca County gets $700,000? Split it five ways, or does it go back to the, the big boss in the heavens?
That's a good question, because at this point, there hasn't been an approved use to, to reallocate it. So if it isn't approved to reallocate, it goes back to the state, and then they will determine who is the beneficiary. It may even go back to HUD, because these monies were designed to support different programs. It didn't all have to be housing assistance. So municipalities or regions collaboratively didn't necessarily apply for it to be used for housing assistance. We did, and then Outagame County and Winnebago County collaboratively applied to use it the same way, but other areas decided to use it in their business districts. So anything that isn't used, it may actually go back to HUD.
Anybody else? Colin.
So what you're saying, I'd like to confirm this thought. This program was slated to end at the end of the year regardless. So the people that are receiving benefits currently would be, their benefits would stop at the end of the year, regardless of whether or not we say anything tonight.
That's correct.
So we're not taking any benefits away from anybody by saying, give this money back to where it came from?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Further questions? Motion?
Moves, so move. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we end the CBD, CDBG-CV program effective at the end of the year? Okay, effective December 31st. Any further discussion? Sandy will call the roll. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, but if the program's going to end anyway by the end of the year, why are we doing this now?
We need, we do need formal council action to do it, to set a date for the ending date.
Which is the same date as the ending date.
Yeah, actually, I actually, I actually thought, I apologize, I actually thought it was sometime in 2024 that the ending date was, but Laura knows the program better than I do, so I would absolutely defer to her.
The program does end at the end of the year. The only thing that you really could decide is if you were going to take applications up to the end of the year and then disperse payments up to six months beyond that, or end the payments and the applications at the end of the year. The reason for that is because under this program, any eligible recipient can receive up to six consecutive payments towards their mortgage and their utilities. We actually did not know that at the beginning of the program. So we have always marketed this program as being, ending at the end of, of the year, at December 31st. So we have let participants know in these upcoming months that they would not be eligible for six full months of payments. If they have delinquency right now, we can cover that, and then any payments up until the end of the year. So there is an option to choose to continue it for a short period of time, but it is an administrative burden, and we have only expended about $350,000 of the 1.1 million. That isn't a lot in comparison. Our friends at Levin, who are administering similar funds from Outagame County and Winnebago, they have experienced the same thing. We know that there are other resources at this point that there weren't when we started the program, and that is the statewide Help for Homeowners program. CAP Services does administer that as well, and what we do right now is anybody who is applying for Help for Homeowners and is eligible for the CDBGCV, we actually funnel them through to that. So we are actually using local dollars as much as possible. That is really the only thing that will go away. The Help for Homeowners will still be there and can serve those folks.
We have a motion and a second, and Sandy was just about to call the roll. Is there any more questions or comments? All right.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Henry Velker.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mio.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
And Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Nine Eyes, motion carried.
Item F is snow removal contract for Opaaca Municipal Airport, and Aaron, it's you again.
Thanks, Ken Paul. This memo, council, is on page 83 of your packet, and Laura, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. 83 of your packet. We also have Matt Klat here, our airport manager. So not long ago, I don't know, a month or, well, I guess it was August, I believe, we found out that our airport snow removal services, the, the contract that was supporting that service, Anderson Custom Services was no longer going to be doing snow removal this year, obviously approaching winter, and we had snow on the ground not too long ago. And in September, we put out an RFP for requesting proposals. We received two proposals, one from TLC Lawns and Landscaping, and then Silvermist. Both those proposals came back, and they were over 200% higher than our cost was last year, and it was just not something that was sustainable within our airport fund. And we took a look at it at an airport board meeting. It was determined that we would table it at that time and look into more advantageous situations for the airport fund and the airport in general. Staff worked together to look into those alternative options. One was talking to the county highway department with their proximity to the airport and their equipment that's out there. One was talking city with city plows, and ultimately, the highway department was not able to do it. Kind of the, some of the drawbacks from using city plows, the way we have it set up right now is, you know, we would be taking away from street potentially at that time, and all the while, we were, Matt was also putting together options in which he found four individuals that, including himself, who are willing, trained, and experienced in running the type of equipment that the airport owns, which the benefit of that is that the tractor that we own through the entitlement money is set up with attachments to remove snow at the airport. You'll notice that some of those other proposals include hourly rates that are for machinery or equipment, and those are not, they're fairly substantial costs. So that would remove the need for that type of cost. Klat Arrow would take these individuals underneath Klat Arrow, so this would be a separate contract with Klat Arrow outside of airport management services, and it would be for snow removal services only at the rates that are attached. I can tell you that when you look at those rates from an hourly standpoint, just labor and no equipment, because we will be using ours, or the airports, I should say, it, we would, if we had similar snowfall or the same snowfall as last year, it would be economic, or it would, we would, it would be less of a cost than even last year's with ACS, who we felt like they did a, a nice job at a reasonable rate. There is some details with this, and I'm going to let Matt speak to those as far as timing of equipment, what the alternative plans are and things like that. So Matt, I'll kick it to you.
So as far as our equipment, we're running behind schedule. It was supposed to be delivered about two months ago. Unfortunately, the factory that is building our tractor went on strike in May. So I was assured that by the second week of November, November 14th, that we would have our equipment, the attachments, and a tractor. It might not be our tractor that we ordered, it may be a separate tractor from Swiderski, which does carry a $50 an hour rate, which is about $100 an hour less than the going rate. So we will have the equipment regardless, whether it's ours or a rental. One note that was left out, while this is a separate contract from the airport management, management contract, while I'm there operating equipment, I will not be collecting an hourly rate because I'm already being paid as airport manager. So the quote that you see in front of you is if it's two people, not including me. So at most, we can have two people at a time, and if it's between the hours of eight and five, my normal contractual hours there, the labor rate is reduced by half. So while I'm confident we'll have the equipment, we do have a backup plan. If a tractor were to fail, normally if it's contracted to another company, it's up to them to find a replacement. And Swiderski has emailed me back and said that they would, if our existing tractor that's out of warranty that we've had for nearly a decade were to break down, that they would rent us at a replacement at the current rental rate, which is around $150 an hour while ours, ours was fixed. So we wouldn't be down equipment, but it, we would incur an extra cost for that. All in all, I think this is the best option for the airport and the city at this point. Everybody that's going to be operating the equipment has experience either with the equipment or specifically snow plowing our airport. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion, we enter into the agreement with Klat Arrow for snow removal services for...
Henry, Henry, the first thing we have to do is reject the, the bids from Silvermist and TLC Lawn. So we'll, we'll do that first.
I'll make a motion to reject.
Okay.
The two bids.
Motion by Velker, second by Fair, that we reject the bids from Silvermist Lawn and Garden and TLC Lawn and Landscaping for snow removal at the airport. Any discussion? Oh, go ahead, Colin.
I'm on board with this. The, the only question I would have is can Klat Arrow, once we reject this, a proposal go with you, can you remove the snow in a timely fashion so that the airport is usable the same extent it was used, you know, usable in the past?
This question, this would be better asked.
Yeah, we're, we're not on that motion. It's a separate motion.
That's a separate motion, but if they can't do that, I wouldn't vote to cancel the other two contracts.
Okay. Fair enough.
I'm, I'm confident that we would. As a matter of fact, one of the people involved with this four once held the contract for the snow removal. So it's not new ground for 50% of the people. Two of them have done the snow removal, and we have discussed it at length, and we are all confident that we can do it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, this is a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. The bids are rejected. Next, we have, I need a motion to approve entering into a one-year contract for the airport's snow removal service with Klat Arrow as presented.
I motioned for that.
Second.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Velker, that we approve entering into a one-year contract for snow removal at the airport with Klat Arrow. Any discussion?
I, I think this is a really good fit, because they are so in tune to what's going on out there, and there's certain people on the airport, we want to be able to get them out at 5:00 or 6:00 AM in the morning sometimes, so it's important, and, and they have some skin in the game out there. So I think it's a good, good fit.
I would second that, too. Everybody involved seems to love the airport, that as far as I can see, and they'll, they'll work hard to get it done.
Yeah, I would just like to say, I think this is not necessarily a permanent solution. It is a one-year solution, and we're going to revisit this again. and we're going to revisit this again, um, probably in the spring, just to, just to see how it went and to see what alternatives we have.
Anything else? Okay, Sandy, roll call, please.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next item is ordinance number 21-0, 2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 17, City Waipaka zoning ordinance. Uh, and this is the first reading, and Jared, would you like to enlighten us?
Of course. Um, so, uh, this is the same ordinance, uh, that we talked about in the, uh, public hearing, uh, at the beginning of the meeting. So this is looking at lot standards for a couple of the residential districts, uh, business districts, and then the industrial districts. All the changes, uh, can be seen on page 95 in a red line document, so, uh, kind of easy. It really highlights what exactly is changing. Um, this is, uh, something that I have brought to Plan Commission, and we've talked about, um, several times, at least two, if not three to four, um, you know, provided opportunity for comment. You know, gave the, the opportunity, if the public saw this and wanted to comment on it, they could come in, uh, at those future meetings and, and talk about them. So really, nothing, uh, came to be of it. Plan Commission, uh, supported it. Uh, the one thing that, uh, we talked about in Plan Commission that is not in here, um, so currently, we have a minimum floor area, or, uh, would that be, a minimum lot area, my apologies. It was discussed doing a maximum lot area for maybe the R1, single-family residential districts. Looking further into that, we did not, I did not include that in this one. Um, there were too many moving elements, um, and figured it would be easier to get something down, uh, with the changes that we've already discussed, and then revisit that topic. So, uh, for any of those in Plan Commission, uh, that may remember that, I just wanted to mention that. But again, that red line, um, great document to look at to see the exact changes that are being proposed. But a lot of cleanup, uh, there's some reduction to kind of bring things, um, some properties, uh, more into compliance, uh, you know, promote development, things like that. So happy to take any questions, um, but again, this is the first reading.
Questions for Jared? All right, this is a first reading, so we'll be, um, having a second reading, I assume, in ex-council meeting, at which time we'll be voting on it. Um, item H, condominium plat, Times Square condominiums. Times Square Joint Venture LLP, owner 800 West Fulton Street. Jared here, again.
Yes, uh, and if you don't mind, I may take, uh, the condo plat and the CSM and kind of explain them at the same time. That'll be the next agenda item. So, uh, Paul had asked, when we were looking at that rezone, if that rezone did, uh, or was accompanied by any other, uh, development interest? And yes, it was. Um, so this is kind of that continued development interest, so as the property is rezoned, um, we can now look to actually doing some of the proposed changes, uh, that the city is not requiring, but more is developer-driven. Uh, that would include a certified survey map that would split the current parcel, uh, that consists of a large multi-tenant structure building, parking lot areas, things like that, everything you see from the street, as well as the large hill behind it. Um, so this proposal for a certified survey map is taking that large parcel and splitting it in half, uh, right behind the building essentially. So the building will become one parcel, and the hill will be, become another parcel. Now, along with that, there is also a proposal, and you can stay on that map, um, for a condominium or a condo plat to be approved or to come forward. Um, that condo plat is just focusing on now the building parcel. So first, the certified survey map would split the two parcels. Now we're looking at just that bottom building parcel in which they are looking to split it, uh, where the old Kmart building ends. Uh, so the Piggly Wiggly side, as we all know it, uh, cost cutters, the vacant spaces, those businesses would be on one unit. The entirety of the Kmart section, or the old Kmart building, would be on the other unit. Um, so this request is being brought forward, as there is development interest in the Kmart unit. Uh, in order to do what they are looking to do, um, and use the property and have that, that control, uh, over the property, this would be their, uh, one and only option to do so. I will mention, along with this, um, there would be, uh, some conditions, uh, that would focus on, you know, the lot standards. There would be, um, conditions based on, uh, traffic landscape, landscaping, stormwater, utilities, things like that. So utilities on one, so if this parcel is approved for the condo, um, and is split, uh, the city will take over the sewer line that extends in front of the building on this map. And will make that a public, and then new private laterals will be off of, for, off of that for each unit. In terms of lot standards, we will be looking at green space and open space requirements. Um, traffic landscaping, stormwater, we will be looking at, uh, the amount of paved surface, along with, uh, traffic flow through the, um, parcels. So all those are requirements, but all of those will be looked at in the site plan process. So currently, uh, the two items that are up for, um, voting is a certified survey map that'll split the large parcel into a hill portion and a building portion, and then a condo plat request that'll split the building portion in two. Hopefully, that makes sense. If it's not, I can clarify in another way.
Makes sense to me. Anybody have any questions?
Colin? In your memo, you state that, uh, occupant four will essentially own their unit. I don't know what that mean. Could you clarify what that means? Will they own it or not?
Uh, so...
I guess in the, in the terms of, uh, the city's concern, who, who pays the property tax, I guess, is the biggest concern?
Yeah, so if, from my understanding, it'll split, um, that fourth occupant that'll be occupying the Kmart section will own it, have control over it. They'll be paying the property taxes on it. And whoever owns the hill part, uh, parcel will be paying taxes on that, and then the property owner of unit two will be paying the property taxes on those.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we have, uh, two items here. The first one is approval of the condominium plat for Times Square condominiums, Times Square Joint Venture LLP. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second. Move by Chestnut, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve the condominium plat for Times Square condominiums. Any further discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Next is approval of the certified survey map for the same, um, company, for the same. Move to approve.
Second.
Velicker, second by Fair?
Sure.
Oh, okay, Chestnut, I'm sorry, Larry.
Sorry.
Move by Velicker, second by Chestnut. The, the council approves a certified survey map for Times Square Joint Venture LLP. Any further discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll, please.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Uh, next item is the proposed Lakeman Field master plan effort, and Laura is gonna explain that to us.
Yes, thank you. So the memo is separate from your packet. It was online. Little background, Lakeman has been a part of our city parks for decades, and we've had many generations of, uh, city residents and outside the city play baseball on that field. Currently, it is used about seven months a year, seven days a week, uh, starting at about 14, ages 14, and going all the way up till we really can't play baseball anymore. And then you coach, right? Um, the lights were put in, in 1976 with a 25-year life expectancy, and the poles that they used were used electrical poles. So there wasn't a whole lot of, um, life left in them, and yet they still stand in 2022. The infield was replaced in 1979 and again in 1993, and the recommendation is that there are only 25 years max on any given field. So with the safety of the light poles, the light lumens is sitting at about 25% or less of what they're supposed to be, and the fact that the field is outdated, we would like to, um, renovate this. And there is in our capital campaign currently in the year 2024, our capital, um, plan, um, currently $350,000 for the lights and $250,000 for the concessions and bathroom for the year 2024. Now, with the addition of the, uh, Public Works Building that's gonna be put into place, we are gonna lose approximately 40 parking spots. And if you've ever been to a Lakeman, Lakeman game, you know that parking is already a very difficult entity out there. So we are asking, uh, Rettler to put together a master plan so that when we replace the lights and we redo the field and add a sound system, that we are doing that thoughtfully so that, um, in the near future, if not, um, at the same time, depending on how much money we can raise, we can, um, take into consideration the parking and, um, the concessions and bathrooms. So putting together just a full scope of the whole area and being really thoughtful about what we do. And the quote for that, so the recommendation is to move forward with the, the Rettler, um, master plan, and that's for $2,500, and we would take that out of our bike ped plan 'cause we had a few extra, um, $1,000 in that plan that we did not utilize.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions for Laura? Okay, we're just voting on approval of the money for the plan.
That's correct, yes.
Nothing else? All right. Somebody in wait, Lori?
Second.
Second.
Move by Chestnut, second, second by Hagan, that we approve paying Rettler Corporation $2,500 to develop a Lakeman Field master plan. Any further discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll, please.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
And the last item in this is license report number 1600, operator's licenses or bartender's licenses. I don't think there's any issues, correct? Okay. All right, need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Fair, second by Chestnut, we approve license report number 1600, operator's licenses. All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carries. Uh, we have no issues or project discussion. And last is communications and recommendations of the mayor. Mayor?
Paul, thank you. Uh, just a couple of things, uh, that I'd like to bring up. One, uh, don't forget, uh, your next, uh, our next city council meeting, uh, which I'll be there in person, is to hopefully pass, uh, the 2023 budget. You know, it could take a little longer for that night, uh, and maybe not, but if you have any questions, obviously, I'm sure staff would appreciate you, uh, reaching out to them ahead of time, uh, so that they're prepared to answer any of those questions that you might have. Uh, the plan is still to only hold one meeting in, uh, December, uh, and that would be a city council meeting that would be on, uh, Tuesday, uh, November 6th would be the meeting. We would, uh, like to, uh, uh, as a Christmas present to all, uh, not hold that meeting on, on the 20th of December, Tuesday, uh, December 20th, uh, unless we need to do that. So it would be subject to call, but, uh, the plan would be not to have that meeting on the 20th. Also, uh, the, uh, the question about, uh, replacing, uh, Mary Fair's position after, uh, her last, uh, meeting, which will be on November 15th. The consensus was, that I got out of this was, is that we would just let that position stay vacant until, uh, the April election. So, uh, anybody that's out there listening and that's interested in that, uh, Sandy, you wanna tell them again what the process is for that?
Sure. Um, December 1st is the first date that anybody can take out candidacy papers, and that means they would need to go around town and get signatures for, um, to be on the ballot. So for an older person, it's not less than 20 nor more than 40. And like I said, December 1st is the first date to start collecting signatures, and they're due the first Tuesday in January, which I believe is the fifth, third, whatever day that hits. January 3rd. Um, and we would be at the office until 5:00 PM then for papers to be returned. So that's the routine.
All right, and, uh, a couple more things that I'd like to say. I know that this already got said once before, but I think it could be sent, said 100 times. What a great job, uh, that the, uh, Halloween festivities down on Main Street were this last week. I've, I've only heard just unbelievable comments about, uh, you know, we thought it was good last year, and it's just, uh, that much better this year, this, this year than it was last year. And so I wanna commend especially the, the Parks and Rec because they were the lead on this, but all of the employees, including council members that helped to, to make this a, a great event and an event that we would like to see continue for, for perpetuity. Uh, and then, Aaron, did you wanna mention, uh, that December, uh, the, is it a luncheon or whatever that you're?
Oh, yes. Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor. So we are looking right now at December 14th for a, kind of a holiday staff appreciation luncheon. Last year, we did it at the rec center in the Blue Gym. Um, probably looking to do the same thing. We'll get more details up. But for now, obviously, all council members are, are more than invited. It's an appreciation for both staff and council members. So kind of mark that off noonish on December 14th.
Thanks, Aaron. Uh, that's all I have, Paul.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We'll need a motion to adjourn. Move by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Pritchatsky, that we adjourn until our next regular scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, November, November, November 15th, 2022. Subject to call. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned.